Regular meeting, it's 10 o'clock even. Actually, I didn't ask anybody, would anybody would like to do the pledge of allegiance? All right, and we got our pastor here, Mr. John Shale. Mr. John, will you come on up to the front? He's the pastor at Harvest Fields Church in Somerville. Oh, I'm sorry, hang on Pastor, I forgot something. Frank Lundie, please come up real quick. Sorry Pastor, we gotta do this real quick, Paul. And you understand, what I told you earlier, we all understand why.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to bring some information to you all. So, this past Wednesday, June 18th, was a day that started like many other days, just very routine. Not long into the day, I received a phone call that none of us ever want to receive. Received a phone call that a county employee had a medical emergency and sadly did not make it. So, this employee, his name is Calvin Glass, been with the county for nine years, he's one of our leaders in the department, he was one of our top operators, but like I said, more importantly, he was a leader and a mentor to many folks. So, just wanted to acknowledge Calvin, he will deeply be missed, not only by his home family, but his family here at the county. So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give a moment of silence for Calvin. Just a reminder, we never know when our last day on this earth is. So, thank you, and Calvin, you will be missed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Frank. Pastor.
Dear Father, we stand in honor of your presence, and we thank you for your love for us. Thank you for creating this great nation, for the state of Alabama, and thank you so much for creating Baldwin County. We thank you that you have an amazing plan and purpose for this county, and we thank you that we're going to see that come to pass. And we thank you for the people that you're bringing from all over the country here, because this is such a wonderful place. We thank you for our leaders, for our county commissioners, for the work that they do. I thank you, Lord, that they have a heart to know and to do your will, and we thank you that we live in such a place like this. We're thankful for the many other things that you do for us, especially for Jesus. Jesus, thank you that you changed everything, and we're the beneficiaries of that. So, we thank you for all these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Before we do the adoption of the minutes, Commissioners, I've got to read this. Prior to the adoption of the June 3rd, 2025 meeting minutes, correct for the record, the account numbers listed in Resolution 2025-139, that's the agenda item CE14, is for parks, capital outlay, motor vehicles, and planning and zoning. Transfer of asset costs, the current account numbers are 14457, 2005.55500, and 10052730.54980, respectively.
I have a motion to adopt the minutes, including this amendment.
All right, I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And I got a motion to a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right. And then, let's see, the Financial Administration Division, payment of the bills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we pay the bill.
And I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve to pay the bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, passes. Then we got the VA2 ratification.
Make a motion, we approve VA2.
And I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve VA2. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. All right, on the consent, remember in the work session, we moved CO4 in front of the presentations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve our consent agenda with item CO4 removed from consent.
I'll second the motion.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent items? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, discussion of item CO4? Frank?
All right, good morning again, Commissioners. So, I am briefly going to run through the foundation of the program before we get into the actual item for CO4. So, earlier this year, the Commission launched this 30 Cube program, and I won't go in as much detail in this meeting as I have in the past, but for anyone who has not seen the 30 Cube program, or has not heard about it, the 30 Cube program is a municipal-county collaborative effort partnership program that the Commission developed to allow local dollars to be partnered at the county and municipal levels. The program is intended to fund capacity and connectivity infrastructure projects. Often, these projects are where the county and municipal jurisdictions merge or come together. There's a lot of overlap in, partly in the county, partly in the city, and so the way to handle those areas, which is where we normally see the transportation needs the most, is through partnerships. We found that these local partnerships are the best way to do it. So, the county has designated $30 million to be matched voluntarily with $30 million of municipal funds by 2030. That's how we coined the 30 Cube program. So, a few weeks ago, another municipality brought a great project to us, and that's been an excellent, that was City of Gulf Shores, but I'm very pleased to announce that the City of Foley has now stepped up and has brought in excellent projects. So, we're really excited to see where this program is going, and the type of projects that are going to be accomplished, and the ability to partner together to reach these goals. So, again, I won't spend a lot of time on the details of the program. We have this on our social media page, there's a full presentation for anyone that's watching, if you'll scroll back through our media page, I go through all of this in detail, so we encourage you to check that out. So, all right, let's jump into item CO4 with the City of Foley project. The item, I'm going to speak a little bit about it, then I want to invite the mayor to come up and say a few words, and then we'll take a vote after that. So, staff recommendations to approve in an intergovernmental roadway construction agreement between the Baldwin County Commission and the City of Foley to construct approximately 5,280 feet of new roadway, one mile, and pedestrian improvements extending James Road from Brinkswillis Road southward. So, for those that may not know where James Road is, this is on the southern portion of Foley, just north of Gulf Shores, and there is a little bit of unincorporated area in this region. This will be just south of Oahu, and the road runs north and south. It will be east of Alabama 59 and just west of the Beach Express. So, this would allow a north-south connection of a local road to allow residents to travel north and south from the Gulf Shores region to the south, to Foley to the north, without having to get on the two main state roads, which was one of the big initiatives of this program with the connectivity. So, basically, I won't go into a lot of detail there, but again, this is just an excellent connection-type route that's been talked about for many years, and we just never really found a way to make all the jurisdictions connect and to achieve it and get it done. The 30 Cube program has done that, so we're very pleased. So, before we take a vote, I would like to offer the mayor the opportunity to come up and speak a little bit about the project and the partnership, and then we'll vote.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Lundie, and good morning, Commission. Thank you for inviting us over here, and I see how popular y'all are. I don't get to attend a lot of these meetings, but thank you for this program, and as we talked, I believe Commissioner Gruber was there when the city council approved it. We have been partners with you guys for a lot of years, not only this, but drainage too, because roads and drainage don't stop at city lines or county lines, and this program, to me, is very progressive. I applaud y'all for doing this. It formalizes our working relationship, and I hope other cities step forward too, because it's so critical with the eight million visitors that come into our county that we have very little control over, is to allow our citizens to move on the roads that are not the main thoroughfares. In regard to this particular road, we have already extended, this road connects into Pride Drive, it connects into Pecan Street, and we've already extended that. Our ultimate goal is to take Pecan Street on a little section north of 98 all the way up Connect, which will then mean that you can come south off the Beach Express and go all the way to the Gateway when this road is done too. So, these are very, very important projects. The 30 Cube program is great, and I applaud y'all for doing that, and thank you for considering us as a partner. We have quite a few more that we'd like to propose to you guys, so we're looking forward to this being done. So, thank you very much for considering this today.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. Do we need to make a?
Make a motion, Tom.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, I don't remember, CO4 with the City of Foley for their 30 Cube project.
And I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
All right, retirees, recognition? Ms. Deidra?
I hate to see them retire, but I understand. I know. Take the words right out of my mouth. So, I am very excited to be able to present our retirees that will be retiring at the end of this month, and while we always hate to lose great employees, you can't help but be super happy for those that have decided to retire. So, without further ado, we have five that we are recognizing today, and those five equal 112 total years of service, which is a huge loss to us, but again, we're super happy for them. So, first, we have, with our Highway Department, is Douglas Protsch, but he was unable to attend today, and so we will wish him the very best. He has 15 years of service. So, we have with our Brats Department, Ms. Ann Simpson, to present a plaque to Ms. Becky Peterson for 11 years of service.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you guys so much for allowing us to just take a few minutes of your meeting, I know you're busy, but just to recognize our employees who do such a great job and who make this county and its operations run as smoothly as they do. Becky has been with Brats as a customer service representative for 11 years. She talks to passengers and drivers all day long, about 100 calls a day. Not only have the drivers and the office staff, but many of the passengers have expressed their well wishes, but also sadness to see her retire, because she's the voice on the other end of the phone, and I just want to tell her thank you very much.
Thank you.
Becky, you want to say something? No, you don't have to.
I just appreciate the opportunity that I have here. It's not a casual retirement, but my mom needs me.
That's right.
But I do want to say that the best decision this Commission's ever made, and it seems like the name is.
Oh! Thank you. All right, next, with the Revenue Commission, we have Commissioner Teddy Faust to present Angela Cometti with 25 years of service.
Like she said, thank y'all for this, and Angela and I started first grade together, so we've been, I like to think of this as a bullfrog day back years ago, and we've been together for years, all the way through school, and she decided to come to Revenue. I think you've been with us, what?
Six months prior to you coming in.
Okay, so, no, after. Oh, yeah, that's right. I started 14 months before I took office, so, yeah. Anyway, she's been a dream, a pleasure, she has, she calls me when she thinks I need to know things, and I'm going to miss that, so I'm going to miss her, and appreciate all you've done, thank you.
Next, we have Frank Lundie to present, Mr. Madison Steele. Come on up. Madison has 19 years of service with Baldwin County, but he has a total of 26 total years of service.
Thank you, Deidra. Madison, wow, we come on board about the same time with the county, Madison was just a little bit after me, I was in 2005, and Madison was a year later in '06, and so we have worked together on many projects over the years, and I must say, for anyone watching and those that's familiar with county facilities, you understand and you recognize the fantastic job our grounds crews do of keeping our facilities maintained. The grass is always cut to a superb level, right on time, flower beds always look nice and orderly and neat, and it just adds that level of professionalism to our facilities that we just wouldn't have otherwise without a top-notch grounds department. Madison is also over the, all of our parks that are throughout the county are boat ramps, and so it has really grown in the last 16 years at Madison. So, I just want to thank you for your service, and so I know you got other adventures, I don't think any of the ducks and the deer and the fish on the delta stand a chance now, so I just want to thank you, Madison, appreciate you.
Last but certainly not least, we have Cliff Milton with the Parks Department, and he has 35 years of service retiring with, and he also, we have your 35-year service pin to present you as well.
Wow, awesome.
Thank you, Deidra. Cliff, so, we just recognized the director of the Parks Department, now we're recognizing the assistant director of the Parks Department. So, we've got a lot of experience, a lot of leadership that's now going to other adventures, so we have some big shoes to fill, I'll say that. So, Cliff is really the foundational backbone of the knowledge, of the history of what we, you know, anytime if we can't find something in the minutes or a record, let's call Cliff. And, you know, everybody needs a Cliff to be able to call, and he can lay out the story of what happened 30 years ago, and it's always just such a blessing to have that. So, Cliff is one of the guys, he doesn't say much, he's not out front, but he is always behind the scenes with anything that's done right, and he's just, was a tremendous resource for Madison to be able to lean on, especially here in the south end of the county. Cliff takes over a lot of the southern end stuff. So, Cliff, just thank you for your service, thank you for your friendship over the years, thank you for all you've done for Baldwin County and your team. Thank you, sir.
I'd just like to say, over the years since I've been here with the county, a long time, I've seen a lot of commissions that come through and everything, but this commission have done a great job in supplying all our departments good equipment too to work with. It's been a joy. The reason I'm saying that now, because I just got a new truck. But that's all right, it's all good, it'd be good for the next person to come along and everything. But I want to say thank y'all for all that y'all done supplying our department and everything.
is to see our county employees, you know, retire, do an outstanding job for our county.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going down, sir, we're coming up, already.
So, I just want to say thank you again for what you've done for the county and for the citizens of Baldwin County. A lot of them don't see what y'all do, but some of them do, so I just want to say thank
Y'all want us down, or?
I'm not sure.
You're the one.
you again from the bottom of my heart.
You're the one.
Are we on all three?
I miss y'all.
I miss you.
I miss you.
I miss Wade.
All right, one, two, three.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
One, two.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'll start off.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you for Cliff.
Thank you very much.
Don't miss him.
I want to just thank every one of the employees, you know, I'm one of the retired individuals
I'm a tomahawk.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
as well, and, you know, you take it to heart when you're employed.
You know, that's one thing that I like, being the Chairman and being the County Commissioner, is to see our county employees, you know, retire, do an outstanding job for our county. So I just want to say thank you again for what you've done for the county and for the citizens of Baldwin County. A lot of them don't see what y'all do, but some of them do. So I just want to say thank you again from the bottom of my heart.
Okay, I'll start off. I want to just thank every one of the employees, you know, you know, I'm one of the retired individuals as well, and, you know, you take it to heart when you're employed. A lot of these people just do outstanding job, you know, in the work that they do, and they do it because they want to help the citizens to be better, help them so that they can continue with their life and everything else, and I just want to congratulate every one of them who retired and wish them the very best. Thank you.
I'm going to start with Cliff. 35 years, wow. I just can't believe you're actually going to leave us. Maybe it's because Madison's retiring, but, you know, that's just amazing. But Madison, we're going to miss you guys, and particularly Parks. You know, people don't realize how many properties that Baldwin County Commission maintains. I mean, I had no idea until, you know, and I still don't know all of them, but it is everywhere, and you guys are everywhere, and everything does always look good, and my hat's off to you because you guys work hard. You work hard during the good times, the bad times. When I say bad times, I'm talking about when we have storms and stuff like that, but we're so proud that we're able to do our part in supporting you guys in your efforts, and I know the entire commission does that, and I know the ones that work for Teddy, and that's amazing to have someone still with you that you were in first grade with. I have a couple best friends that, I have one girl that she works for a municipality, but she works on Saturdays in my little small business, and it's so cool to have people follow you that much in your life. And Brats, yes, I concur with Ann Simpson deal, yes, she is great, she's magnificent, and I'm missing one. What's the other one? He wasn't here today. Which one was that? Where was he at?
Doug.
He was with Highway.
Highway. Y'all didn't get him here today. Yeah, yeah, it's so much easier when you actually see him, but thank you guys for showing up today. I think it means a lot to the other employees when you actually come, and we appreciate it. We don't mind at all taking the time to say thank you, because we are here to serve. That is what we're here for. It is not for us, and the fact that you can get a good career out of it is also another bonus. And Madison, you ain't old enough to retire, I don't think, so.
It is, though.
Oh, that's how old I am. Wow, okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, everything what they said is right on, and nobody can ever see me because I'm the guy that gets stuck behind this post here, so we've got 105 years of service that we just took care of in 15 minutes. That blows my mind anytime we do stuff like this, so 105 years of service and two of those are both out of one department, so, you know, that's the majority of those years as well. And so, like Frank said, we got some large shoes to fill in every single one of these departments, and I just appreciate all the hard work and dedication that y'all give us. And Mr. Cliff, I really appreciate the comment about thanking us, because it's something that's rarely heard of, and I appreciate you thanking us for providing you what you needed during your job duties, and just take a picture of the truck, right?
That's right.
You can drive around a few more days, right? Anyway, thank you all y'all again for what you do, and like Frank said, I know the deer and the duck and everything else on the river is not safe from those steel boys. So Madison, y'all enjoy it, and Becky and Angela, everybody else, y'all, I hope you enjoy your time off, and maybe y'all are starting something new in life, like retirees do now, so good work, and thank y'all.
You can always come back and work part-time. You know, that's what I like about the county, you can come back and work part-time if you need to. And, you know, everybody knows this, the Commissioners know this, the citizens know this, employees know this, but you are the backbone of this county, of this government, so just want to let you be aware, y'all, the employees, to know that. All right, thank you. All right, we're going into the public hearing. Look, everybody, there's a lot of people here for all these rezoning cases, and we got, just be patient with us, because there's a lot of them. We're going to go through it, take our time and make the right decision. There's some key points that I want to know if you're going to come up and speak, is just identify yourself, tell me where you live. You don't have to say the exact, you know, the city or anything, just tell me the address, because I want to keep that private, but anything else, be respectful, stay on topic. If you're going to speak on behalf of a group, you're going to get five minutes. If you hear individually, you're going to get three minutes. We're going to have to stick by it. When the timer goes off, I'm going to have to cut you off. I'm not being rude, it's just that we have a lot of people in here and there's things that's going to happen. So just want to let y'all be aware of that. All right, Mark?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
We have five empty seats up here.
Oh, come on, y'all want to sit down up front?
This is not church.
Yeah, I know, in the Baptist, we sit in the back.
I'm Pentecostal, so I'm usually on the front, so come on.
Y'all sit in the back seat.
We won't bite, I promise.
I mean, come on up and sit down.
So you can get lunch on time?
Go ahead, Mark.
All right. We received, the Highway Department received a request from the adjacent property owners to vacate a portion of a 30-foot wide, unopened, unimproved roadway known as Dana Drive. Dana Drive is located due west of the intersection of County Road 9 and County Road 28. The petitioners own the property on both sides of the requested area, and the roadway is unopened, unimproved, and not maintained by the county. The vacation of the roadway will not deprive the other property owners to convenient and reasonable means of ingress and egress to and from their property. But as with any requested vacation of roadway, according to the Alabama Code of Alabama, I should say, whenever the governing body or municipality or county proposes to vacate a public street, the governing body shall schedule a public hearing prior to taking final action. So that's what we're asking you to do today, is to go to the public hearing, and we are recommending the vacation of the roadway.
Okay. I guess we need a motion.
I just opened the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, open up the public hearing. Does the petitioners want to come speak? Does anybody that wants to, that did not sign up to speak on this would like to speak? All right, plug the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the vacation of this roadway, case number VAC-25/1.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, thank you. And like I said before, on these planning and zoning, rezoning cases, if you're speaking on a group, let us know, you know, who you're speaking on behalf, what group, if it's a contractor, company, or whatever. You got the floor?
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So our first case is the Cooper property rezoning, which is in the Rosington community. The applicant has requested to withdraw this application, so by ordinance, when the request was received within seven days of the public hearing, it still must come to this board for a motion, for, you know, an action to accept their withdrawal. So staff would recommend that you accept their withdrawal on this, but the representative of the applicant, Ms. Barnett with Dewberry Engineering, is here and would like to address the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We just are requesting to withdraw the application. We've heard that the community doesn't want it, and so sorry that it took within the seven days and that there wasn't more notice being offered, but it feels like it's in our best interest to go back to the drawing table, see what makes sense for the area, and kind of start again. So I don't know when that will happen, but we definitely would request the opportunity to do it another way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make a comment based on all of the information that has, I mean, we're certainly here to serve, and I don't mind people contacting me, I don't, I want that to be out there, but this was not recommended from the beginning from staff, and so I've talked to many of, I don't even know who all, I don't even know who all you people look like that I've talked to on the phone or whatever, but one thing I want to state is that in 2006, I believe it was, this community made a decision to voluntarily come under zoning. You guys had a citizen-driven process, you had a vision of what you wanted your community to look like, and I think that that has resounded in this particular case, and I want you to know that you were heard, and I talked with the applicant. Is the applicant here? Is Ms. Bonner here? No? Okay. I talked to the applicant for quite some time on the phone last week, and I just want to encourage the representative from Dewberry or whoever that, it was brought to my attention that, you know, farming is not really the way people are doing things, but this area wanted to remain a rural, I don't know if you use the word hamlet in Baldwin County, but, and RSF-1, RSF-2, none of that fits in with the character of what these people are asking in this area. I think, you know, if you've got a rural agriculture, there's a lot of things that could go on in rural agriculture that may not be so befitting of what you may really want to see, but there is a designation called Rural Single Family Estate Size, which is a minimum square footage of 80,000 square feet. It's almost two acres, which by right, an RA could be subdivided into three-acre parcels, and so I just want the people of the community to engage maybe with the different property owners and try to, you know, let them know what your visions and things are. We're here to support you and different things, but at the same time, you know, there has to be some kind of a balance there in what we can do that makes it good so that your community, most people are not farming the parcels that are rural agriculture, but the RSFE is a designation that I would just like to encourage you guys to look at, okay? I'm not saying that this is what the applicant's going to ask for, but I think anything less than that is not going to fit into the character that you guys desire in the Rosington community. And so I hope that I've been heard, because I have said this over and over and over and over again, but sometimes I have to say it more and more and more and more, but you have been heard, and we appreciate it, and I do believe it was the phone call that I had with Ms. Bonner that helped, because she said, "What would you do? What would you do if this was your property?" I said, "I would withdraw the application, and I would look for something better." And I said, "But it's at the mercy of the commission now. I'm one of four voters, that's it. I can make, I cannot sway the rest of this commission in any way whatsoever." So I do appreciate the applicant for asking for the withdrawal. I don't know how the outcome would have come, but I think it's in the best interest for everybody, and I appreciate you guys showing up. Thank you for your engagement in the civic process. Thank you. And with that, I will make a motion that we accept the withdrawal.
Hang on. Do the public hearing.
Oh, we do have to do a public hearing?
We still got to do the public hearing.
Do we have to do a public hearing?
Yep.
Well, I think if y'all are going to vote to allow the withdrawal, there does not need to be a public hearing.
I didn't think so.
Okay. I just want to say this before we go any further. Like Commissioner Underwood said, in my opinion only, is that I would like to see maybe the Baldwin County School Board look at that piece of property, because within the next 10 to 15 years, the way that this county is growing, they need to start branching out and looking, instead of those kids going to Locksley or somewhere else. So that's what's probably what's going to happen, I don't know. That's just my opinion only, so, and it does not fit in that area, but anyway, thank you all for showing up, so.
So you got a motion, I got a second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. So the withdrawal passes.
Mr. Chairman, I need to remove myself for the next two cases.
Okay.
To deal with conflict.
All right, the next two cases, Commissioner Underwood is recusing herself.
You want to ask?
We're going to give them a few minutes to let them get out. Hey, we still have a meeting? We still have a meeting? We still, can I ask y'all to walk out quietly, please? Go outside, and you can talk. Thank you. Not trying to be rude, I just want you to understand, we're still in our meeting.
We're good?
Go ahead, ma'am.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is Case Z2415, the Goodwin property, as well as Case PRD2502, Long Bayou Preserve. The request is to rezone as well as have a planned residential development for a 48-unit residential community. Here's the location of the property within the county. The property is located east of the Baldwin Beach Express and north of the city of Orange Beach. This is in Planning District 30. Their request is to rezone from RA Rural Agriculture to RSF-2 Residential Single Family. The total property area to be divided is about 36 acres. In terms of the minimum lot size requirement for RSF-2, this is 15,000 square feet with the minimum lot width of 80 feet, and the applicant's requesting their smallest site to be 4,500 square feet for cottage-sized lots, and the width of each lot to be 50 feet. In terms of density with the PRD, they're requesting 2.04 lots per acre, and a PRD does allow a smaller lot size than the minimum in our zoning ordinance, but the overall density would need to be met of 2.9 units per acre. In terms of open space, they are providing approximately 29 acres. With usable open space, they are requesting, proposing 3.87 acres. They've provided their utility letters. In terms of wetlands, they did have a wetland delineation performed by Biome Consulting Group with about 25 acres of wetlands on the property, and staff has received one email opposing the rezone and associated PRD. Here's the locator map and the site map. The subject property is surrounded by RA zoning with land uses that are vacant. And here are some of the property images. A lot of these images were snipped from our Baldwin County parcel viewer. In terms of neighboring properties, within the city of Orange Beach, there's the proposed Margaritaville Resort, and then that's going to be approximately .65 miles from the subject property, and it's zoned for general business use.
How far is it from Margaritaville?
About .65 miles, so a little less than a mile. Here are the agency comments. In terms of the staff analysis, the proposed 48-unit development is to be known as Long Bayou Preserve, and of the 48 lots proposed, 36 of them will be waterfront, the remaining 12 will be interior cottage lots. They are requesting 11 90-foot lots, 30 80-foot lots, as well as 12 60-foot width lots, and 12 50-foot interior cottage lots. This will all be constructed within a single phase. The largest lot would measure 13,500 square feet, and they are requesting a variation in setbacks. This would include a 20-foot setback in the front and 10-foot setback in the rear and side. In terms of the wetlands, approximately 3.57 acres of delineated wetlands will be impacted for development. They did receive approval from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to fill these wetlands, as well as a variance from ADM. Due to the presence of wetlands and the abundance of timberland, the subject properties and the surrounding... the surrounding areas have been zoned as rural agriculture, and they've remained this since zoning was adopted in 1995. Rural agriculture provides for large, open, unsubdivided land that is vacant, and it's being used for agricultural, forests, or other rural purposes. In terms of the future land use map, the subject property does consist of a small area of conservation development. This allows for limited development with low-impact principles. The proposed zoning request to RSF-2 allows for a moderate development density, and this would not conform to the future land use for this property, which is primarily ideal conservation. And lastly, there is no clear development pattern to support the rezoning request. This area is surrounded by a large wetland region before moving further westward and southward into more commercial property within the city of Orange Beach. Here's the future land use map showing that the majority of the area is located within ideal conservation development potential. Here's the overall site plan outlining the amount of open space and usable open space. The site data table, I have highlighted the amount of fill that will be requested and as well as the amount of wetlands on the property. The lot sizes that are proposed. This is the architectural concept provided by the applicant, additional open space images in more detail. The property does lie within the VE flood zone, so they likely have additional permits that may need to be received. In terms of the variations, this is more of like a summary table of what they're proposing. I've mentioned earlier, they're proposing reduced setbacks in the front and rear yards, reduced lot area, especially with the cottage lots, as well as a reduced lot width at building line, and then additional variations as shown on the screen below the first table. And this is the document provided by the applicant of those master lists of deviations. And here's the wetland delineation provided by Biome Consulting Group. And then the public notice from the Army Corps of Engineers regarding their request. And then additional documentation regarding wetland fill and the setback deviation from the applicant. Here's their document showing the access to the property from the Baldwin Beach Express or the Foley Beach Express. The amenities that are proposed include a 26 boat lift marina and pier as well as a sporting club. So in terms of the rezoning, staff is recommending the rezone requests from RA to RSF-2 be denied due to incompatibility with the adjacent land use as well as nonconformity with the master plan. In terms of the planned residential development, staff is recommending denial. However, if it is the pleasure of the commission to approve the PRD, we would request that you approve this with the conditions outlined on the screen. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
I've got one quick one. When you had the first slide up that you started out with, you were calling this case Z24/15. I just wanted to let the record reflect that there's probably a typo in y'all's presentation.
Oh, 2515. Probably it.
That's all I've got on that.
Okay, thank you.
And then...
The questions that I have, so they got the permits from ADM and Corps of Engineers. And I read in the package where the county will not take over if this gets approved, that the county will not take over the road or the maintenance of the road.
That's correct.
And I understand why. But on the thing that I have, is you said something to the effect of the setbacks, or they're limiting their space. In other words, they don't want to take much wetlands at all, it looks like to me. I think there are only 3.5 wetlands out of the whole thing, out of the whole...
Yes.
And when they say that, is that when, I guess, the concrete slab that's going to be in the front, is that's what is adding up? Is the 3.5?
It's the concrete slab for parking. It's the access road to the property as well as the access to the other homes and amenities.
Sure. And so the main reason that the request for denial by the staff is because of compatibility?
That's correct.
So across the intracoastal canal, none of that will take in effect? The Margaritaville is not going to take any effect, because I'm assuming that is a little different?
It's because there's a large swath of wetlands.
Sure.
And so there's not a clear development pattern that's showing less impact to greater development. The wetlands is more of a buffer that would hinder that clear path, showing that we are having commercial use towards the area where they're proposing development.
Okay. Because I know they can't farm it, and it's rural agriculture, but, okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
All right. Skip, you got any questions?
No.
All right, now. All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Let's see.
Are we doing, Brad, are we doing these cases together?
Yeah, we can hear these together. That's typically what we do, but we'll take two different actions after the public hearing. So we do have three people, well, actually, two people signed up in support of it. The first is Tom Grainger, who's the engineer for the project.
All right, I'll open up the public hearing. Tom, you want to come speak on it?
And this is the public hearing for both?
Yes, for both.
Okay. Just so the public knows.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity coming for you today.
Thank you.
I am Tom Grainger, the engineer. I'm here with the developers, Richard and Maury Cobb, and the landowners, Tyler Goodwin and Hooper Matthews. Corey did a good job explaining the facts. We would like, this rezoning would allow for 48 single-family homes, and these are primarily going to be second homes for people who are looking for a beach house at or near the beach. As she presented, there are 26 boat slips that have already been secured through leases with state lands. The developers have spent the last two years to obtain all the permitting through the Corps of Engineers and Alabama Department of Environmental Management, state lands, and Fish and Wildlife. And those permits are in place. Yes, there's some fill of wetlands, and Commissioner McKenzie, you said the primary fill location is the access road in. I think that's 2.04 acres of the entire fill, which is about 57% of the wetlands fill. On site, on the 36 acres, is approximately 1.53 acres, and that is for the internal roads. And some of the, not all of them, but some of the lots are completely over wetlands, and so we need a parking pad under the house. We did ask for RSF-2. That was due to the fact that when you take in acreage for your density calculation, you only get 50% credit for the wetlands. So our effective acreage is 23.5 acres. Now, RSF-2 would allow for 2.9 units per acre, which would be 68 lots. We're proposing just over two units per acre for 48 lots. And I know you get it every day, the impact that subdivisions have, and typically they revolve around three issues: traffic, drainage, and schools. Well, in this case, we don't see 48 single-family residential homes as being very impactful traffic-wise when you look at the development of Margaritaville to our west. We're going to be significantly lower impact. Drainage, we drain directly through tidal influence by the water along Bayou and the intracoastal canal. And as far as schools goes, these will probably not be permanent residents, and so we don't expect very many of these will be houses that will have children that are going to be put in our school system. However, the rezoning, you now probably get current use on your admin bonus taxes, and 48 million-dollar lots are going to greatly increase, so that'll be a donor community to the school system. The HOA will have covenants and restrictions that are strictly going to enforce protection of the 29 acres of open space, of which 25 acres is wetlands. There will be no construction, no manipulation, no touching of those wetlands. And like I said, the owners have spent two years of their life trying to get these permits before they came to you, because we figured that if they came to you before all this, you'd say, "Go get your permits, and then we'll talk." So they did that. And as far as the compatibility, they are correct. We're about a half-mile center-to-center from Margaritaville, but if you look at the map, and I don't have the exact, but from our western line to their eastern line along the water is more like 1,300 feet. So we're pretty close to major high-density residential. I think there are five units per acre in the residential, and also their commercial development. So where, and across the canal, you have the wharf, of course, which is high-density residential and commercial. So we feel that there is somewhat of a transition from high-density to our low-density to the rural agricultural that will be on our north and our east. And I would just like to see if you have any questions. I left something out. Or...
I have no questions.
I don't have any questions.
No, thank you, Mr. Tom. If you're finished.
Yes.
You want to keep going? Okay. All right.
Next, we have signed up is Tyler Goodwin.
Thank you, Jay, for doing this, because...
Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, welcome back from abroad, and thank you for your service of Baldwin County. I'm Tyler Goodwin, and I, along with Hooper Matthews' family, own the subject property. But we don't just own the 36 acres that's the subject property. We have 400 acres surrounding it, that the 36 acres is a part of. We have approximately 12,000 feet of waterfront. So the reason that the 36 acres is the subject to this rezoning and PRD is because it is the most logical place to start. It is where the Corps of Engineers put spoil when they dug the intracoastal canal. Staff has said that, in a sense, we're leapfrogging from Margaritaville across the agricultural or timberland to where we're starting the development, but it's a natural place to begin, and we own all the property between where the development is and Margaritaville. We own, on the other side of Long Bayou, if you look at the map, we own 200 acres across the water. So to the south is what they call, the Corps of Engineers calls Track 301. Track 301 is 80 acres, which is a dyke site to dump spoil from the intracoastal canal. Nothing south of us, south of the intracoastal canal, will ever be developed. I know that because the government condemned that property from us in perpetuity, and we litigated it in the United States Court of Claims. So nothing to the south will be developed and can't be used to say that we are, in a sense, not compatible with what's around us. To the south will never be developed. To the east, we own. To the west, we own. And if you look at Margaritaville, if you follow the shoreline, it's about 1,000 feet from us. Margaritaville is one of the largest developments on the Gulf Coast in recent years. And we are simply trying to take a very small portion of a large tract of land and be good stewards and develop it in a sense that will be compatible with nature and protect the environment. We're not asking for industrial use, or we're not asking for a large mixed-use development. We're trying to make something that is compatible with nature. We've been good stewards of this land for over 70 years, and we want to continue to be good stewards of this land. We think that this application is a good compromise between government regulations and private property rights. The rezoning allows us to transition from timberland to a very moderate development that will not impact the environment as much as other developments would.
Tom, I have to cut you off.
I understand.
All right. I respect that. I just got to do it. I got to do it for everybody.
I understand. And thank you for your consideration. We ask that you approve the applicant.
No, thank you.
Sure, that's all we had signed up, but...
Is there anybody else that did not sign up that wants to speak on this case? Did anybody, I thought I heard somebody, you said it was somebody opposed.
It was an email.
It was an email, okay. All right, well, thank you. All right, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, in regards of case number Z25/15, the Goodwin property rezoning, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning request.
All right, I have a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so it passed, three.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of PRD25/02, I make the same motion that we approve, and with the conditions as outlined in staff's recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you get Commissioner Underwood back in?
Do you know where she went? Does anybody know where Commissioner Underwood?
I'm in conference room.
Jay, are you going to take care of the people that want to speak for me? Would you mind doing that? That way I can look at the case. I have to do each button, and...
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay, I appreciate it. I'm going to X out now. There's a lot of people. I'm going to wait till Commissioner Underwood gets back. Somebody, I think Buford went to find her. I'll wait. All right, you wait. There she comes. Thanks, Buford. You made it back.
Y'all finished?
Yeah, we're finished with those two.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Elena.
A lot of people left.
All right, this is a rezoning case, the Parker property. They're requesting to rezone from RSFE to B2. The subject property is located north of Pleasant Road and east of County Road 13 in Planning District 15. It is currently zoned RSFE, which is state residential, and the applicant is asking that it be rezoned to B2 Neighborhood Business District. The total acres is 10, and the applicant is asking for the B2 for future commercial development. Here's the locator map. You can see to the north and east, it is zoned RSFE. To the west is zoned B2. Most of the surrounding properties are vacant. There is a church across the street. There have been numerous developments in the surrounding area, including several annexations by the city of Daphne and many commercial rezonings. The future land use map indicates this area as high-density development potential. Staff has recommended amended approval, and the planning commission also recommended approval seven to zero.
Commissioners, any questions for...
I do have a question for you. Whenever the piece of property on the corner was rezoned to B2, I believe that was around 2020, somewhere in that neighborhood.
It was a few years ago.
A timeframe, I'd rather use the word timeframe than neighborhood. But, you know, we didn't have, and I'll just say it point-blank, we didn't have a decent master plan to go by at that point in time, and that was really not the area for a commercial node to be. And so with looking at this application, I realize you guys have a job to do, and there is a contiguous piece of property next to that that got rezoned, probably at a timeframe when we just really didn't have a good direction to follow. But I just can't see where that a B2 really fits along Pleasant Road there, when it should be more close up to like 181, because what you're doing here is speculative anyways. We don't have, there is, we rezoned that corner piece of property. Nothing has happened on that corner piece of property since that point in time. So I've actually went over there and rode on that piece of, that road, Pleasant Road, know people who live in that area, and I'm just really kind of feel like that this could go either way from the very matter of... go either way from the very matter of the fact that the B2 happened on the corner when it did about five years ago. So I just have very strong feelings about the continuation of business along this corridor in an area where we already have a lot of congestion. And I know that the surrounding areas, I believe, is that RSFE?
That's correct.
Okay.
To the north and east.
And maybe that's not so good either, maybe RSF1 or RSF2. But I just don't know that a business continuation along that, because that would almost, then it would be next. So I guess I'm just at a point where, where does this stop? So that's my comments.
Okay. And further to the east, you have the RSF2 property that was recently approved for a PRD that included the RMF6, the Lanterner property, which was a PRD. It had multifamily and single-family in it.
Right. And that was actually, I felt like it was, because it was residential.
Correct.
Yes, and I knew. But anyways, I just feel strongly about this piece, and I was kind of shocked that it was, you know, a unanimous recommendation, but, okay.
Commissioners, anything else? All right. I'll open up the public hearing. Jay, who's...
Mr. Chairman, we have one person signed up, Samuel Dean. He's signed up in opposition.
Okay.
Good morning, my s... Good morning. I'm Samuel Dean. My wi... Me and my wife, Susan, have lived on Pleasant Road for quite a few years. My wife went to school with Mr. Parker. That's the good thing about living in a democracy. American citizens have the right to self-determination. I'm not opposed to Mr. Parker doing, being able to do anything he wants to with his property as long as it doesn't encroach on the aesthetics and what's already established in our area. Like Ms. Underwood said, if it's already established for estate lots, keep it that way. Let them build on two or three-acre lots. We're not opposed to that. On the east end, at 181, is already that commercial property where they have those three big storage buildings. Well, they were built three feet above grade. Last year, the county had to go in there and put a, shut Pleasant Road down for a week, putting a big covert in there, just to drain what was coming from the north side to the south side, going down 300 feet and then going back over on the north side. When you, I don't know if this is going to be unrestricted commercial and where they could put a pig parlor or whatever they wanted to in there, but if it's commercial, it's going to be huge buildings out there. Your footprint on that soil is going to be thousands of concrete that's going to displace the drainage out there. So we'd be silhouetted, silhouetted by commercial on the east end and commercial on the west end with the estate houses, including ours, that's already built out there right in the middle. And I said, we're not trying to make enemies with the Parkers. We just, my wife has been there for 60 years. Her family's been in the Belle Forest area for 140 years. The Catholic cemetery out there was donated in 1906 by her grandfather. So we're established in the community. I'm in retirement age now. I just want to be nice and peaceful like it is. And like you said, Ms. Underwood, why not just just build some nice homes out there? Why, when you want to go out there and expand on the commercial, yeah, let it be over bound by 64 or 181. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a blessed day.
That's all we had signed up. Does Mr. Parker, would you like to say anything?
I would like to say something.
Your name was brought up, so I wanted to give you the chance.
Yes, sir. I'm Dean Parker. I've lived there on that property since I was two, so I'm 65, so I've been there quite a while. My family has owned over 100 acres. My family owns property to the east of me, to the west of me, to the north of me. Well, to the north of that property, they just developed, Daphne just allowed a development there with like 60 houses. Of course, they've done a great job on that development. They did a water develop, a water drainage development to the north of us is where our water goes. All of that water there goes to Taiwasi Drainage, which goes to the bay. Our property drains to a pond north of us. All of that water goes from that pond, and it goes across that new development, past the Brennities Development that's been there a while, and that goes into Taiwasi, which is, Sahoy is just north of us right there, and you've got Taiwasi Development. So the water problem is never going to be a problem because they've taken care of that. So as far as development, being that I've lived there for 60, over 60 years, and I've hunted on that property, I've lived, we've lived on that property. With all the development, the French settlement, the Baptist Church across the street, we were, you know, we were all for it. What I don't understand is why, we've lived there, we've not ever said anything to anyone about doing anything, but for some reason, people who are living around here, because they moved there, it was okay, but now that somebody else is trying to do something, it seems like it's not okay. And to address Ms. Underwood, when we start to talk about development in Baldwin County, where do we start and where do we end? There is no beginning and no end. Not really. Because Daphne, Daphne can't go north. Daphne, it can't go south. And you know it can't go to the west. Daphne's, Daphne's growth is to the east, period. Daphne has two roads coming out of it, Highway 64 and Whispering Pines. Well, Whispering Pines is just Pleasant, so an extension of Whispering Pines going to 181. Ricky Higby on the corner across the street from us, that lot, he has a lot on that one corner to the west of us, and that's already commercialized, and he's got that for sale right now as commercial property. Daphne is growing in one direction. And we're not, we're not asking for a strip mall-type situation. That's not what, that's not what we're wanting to do. What we're wanting to do is put up, be able to put up a building on our property and utilize our property. That's all. We just don't want to have, we just don't want to build a house on it. We want to put a building on it.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else that wants to speak on this case that did not sign up? All right. Close the public hearing.
Can I ask a question?
Jay?
Yes, sir.
Was there, so he said he didn't want to do any commercial buildings. He just wanted to put a building on it. There, any...
Gee, a commercial building? Yeah.
So the B2 is our local business zoning district, which allows, it's limited business. It's not like a general business that has a lot of uses, but it's still a business district, done the same. It allows more neighborhood-scale businesses is what B2 allows.
I guess I want to clarify my comments I made earlier, is that when the corner piece was rezoned, was that not your family or you that rezoned that?
Yeah.
Okay. And so that was done at a timeframe about five years ago? Okay? And the guidance, let's talk about growth for just one quick second here. You know, growth in itself, I say it all the time, is not a problem, but unchecked, unplanned growth is, and what we need is guided growth. We worked really, really hard in these last five years to come up with some better guided growth. We have a better master plan. We have better things that you wouldn't put commercial nodes right there. The commercial nodes would be more at busier intersections. And my point was that we did rezone that one, and it doesn't mean that you have to keep rezoning something down the road, and that was the point I was making. And so the fact that that was rezoned five years ago and nothing was ever developed on it, it makes me wonder, why should we, you know, continue that to where that it would stretch from 13, I guess that's 13, right, all the way to 181? Because eventually, there are a lot of houses and stuff up closer to 181, but I just, it just seemed, it just didn't, it didn't seem like that that was the right trend based on the current growth guides that we've been working on.
I close the public hearing. So commissioners, y'all got any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the case number Z-25-09, Parker property rezoning.
All right. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Motion passes. All right. Next case? Is that you, young lady?
Yes. All right. The next case is the Bayview Partners Loveless property. They want to rezone from rural agricultural to residential manufactured housing park. The subject property is located in Planning District 31. It's just on the north side of Highway 90 and west of the Beach Express. It is currently zoned RA, rural agricultural, and the applicant is asking for RMH, which is manufacturing housing park district. The total acres is 15.9, and the applicant is requesting this to expand the existing manufacturing housing park. Here you can see the subject property is highlighted. It is surrounded by some RA zoning, except to the south, that is multifamily zoning, and that is another mobile home park. There has been few rezonings in the median area, a couple of manufactured housing parks that existed before zoning in this area. The flame shows this area as moderate development potential, and this includes clustered manufacturing housing parks and can also include a variety of housing types from large and medium lot-sized single-family. Staff has recommended approval, and the planning commission also recommended approval six to two.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Alena?
I don't have any.
All right. I'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Jay?
We had no one sign up for this one.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience that did not sign up for this case that would love to speak? All right. Hearing none? Close the public hearing.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve case Z-25-10, the Bayview Partners LLC Loveless property rezoning.
And let's look at that.
All right. Got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next case?
All right. The next rezoning case is the UN property. They're requesting to zone from RSFE to RA. The subject property is located in Planning District 22, is north of County Road 20 and west of Stuckey Road. The current zoning is estate single-family, and the applicant is asking that it be rezoned to RA, rural agricultural. The total acres of this property is 20. The applicant has requested the RA zoning in order to have no size requirement for the accessory dwelling. If the property stays RSFE, they have to, they could have two dwellings, but one of them can't be more than 60% of the size of the main dwelling. So they are asking for RA to not limit the size on either homes.
Are you finished?
Well, I've got a few more slides. Here you can see the subject property is surrounded by RA zoning to the northwest and east. To the south is RSFE. The prevailing development in this vicinity is primarily agricultural rule with estate-sized lots. This is a recorded subdivision. The subject property is approximately 21 acres, and they had made the request in order to have no limitations on their two dwellings that they proposed. The majority of the adjacent parcels along Fell Road are designated as RA. The future land use map designates this area as moderate development density. And staff has recommended approval, and the planning commission also recommended approval four to three.
Why not just subdivide the property?
Well, it is in a recorded subdivision. The current road is unpaved. This is one of the last subdivisions before, when we allow 20-acre lots to be on unpaved roads. So if they did a subdivision and replatted this lot, they would have to pave the road. And a family division is not allowed in a current subdivision.
Okay. So it's already been subdivided once, so it can't be you family subdivided again? Is that right?
It's in a recorded subdivision. Correct.
Okay. So, so, okay. This is just interesting how that you asked for a different use to bypass this, or, I don't know. Okay. I'm done.
So just one clarification on this. If you all recall, we had this 60% rule for accessory structures throughout all zoning districts until we amended zoning ordinance. So there, so we've removed that from the zoning ordinance as a whole, but there are some local provisions in a couple of the zoning districts that's still hanging around in. This is one of the planning districts that still requires the 60%, the accessory structure has, sorry, accessory dwelling has to be 60% of the primary dwelling as far as square footage. So that's one of the things, over time, as you all know, it takes some time to get these local provisions kind of cleaned up. It's a little bit more challenging than the zoning ordinance as a whole. So it's something that we're definitely aware of because it creates situations like this, but right now, that is the rule, it has to be 60% of the primary dwelling in this area.
I mean, changing the use in me is very big deal. And I just, I see all the green on the map, but I know this is not being actively farmed. People think rural agricultural, you think farm. And it's the same thing with an area where you want to kind of create the rural atmosphere, but, but in these kind of areas, I think RSFE is really the closest thing that we have to what people are trying to achieve with larger lots and what you would normally call sprawl, but because that's what the general area is, it wouldn't be necessarily considered sprawl if that's what the normal of the area is. So I don't know.
So this lot that we're talking about here, this was already platted in a subdivision.
It is...
Somebody came and asked for rezoning in a rural agricultural setting, right? I mean, how did it get to RSFE?
All that around there is RSFE.
This was probably originally zoned as RSFE because that plat's been around for a long time, and it's 20-acre, it's 20-acre parcels, 20-acre lots. So they, nothing would have stopped, they would not have been required to rezonate RA to do that, is what I'm saying. So it was probably initially zoned RSFE, but, yeah, so it's, yeah, I don't know the entire history of the zoning on this development, but the fact that just the size of the lots that were subdivided, it wouldn't require to be rezoned to do what they did.
I may ask you this, as staff, I mean, I know y'all check the boxes and stuff, but is there something that you recommend? I mean, is this something that you like seeing people rezoning like this to be able to do that kind of?
For this purpose, no. I think we need to work on amending the local provisions of that planning district because this is...
Okay. That's kind of more where I was...
Yeah. This is what I call like an unintended consequence of what that local provision created. You know, I don't think this was ever envisioned to be the result of what that local provision was created. Because, you know, yes, it does, you know, we have our criteria, we have to recommend for rezonings, and, you know, so yes, it meets those criteria while we have the recognition we have, but the fact is, it is in a state lot subdivision that was developed in this manner, and it kind of is not consistent with...
It's still subjective.
It's very subjective still.
Very, very subjective. It's not a check-the-box.
You know, we've had several rezoning cases in this general area lately, and this area is still kind of trying to find its identity a little bit. Like, there's not a clear development pattern of what's going on, so it's been... pattern of what's going on, so it's been, there's been a couple other rezonings denied in this area for similar reasons that it's just not really consistent with what's happening in the area.
Skip, that's down in your area. What you feel about this?
Well, you know, I, you know, that's been, most of it's been RSFE for, you know, a long time, and, well, I can see what he's trying to do, tell you, it's, you know, it's a 20-acre, it's a 20-acre lot is what it is. And a lot of people out there have horses and everything else, and, you know, I think he's wanting to put, you know, a horse stable there for, for horses, you know.
But you can have that in RSFE.
The horse table does not, yeah, that's fine.
But still, it's not, you can't be, you know, it can't, it's restricted to a smaller...
What they're trying to accomplish, they want to build a...
Another house.
Another house, let a son build another house.
No limitation on the size of the house.
Yes. I mean, if the, if the goal was that you want to go into agriculture, I get it, but that's not what's happening in that area particularly. I mean, RSFE is the, is the, is the classification that fits this rural area where people are not farming for a living, whether it's horses or whatever, you know.
So if, so the con, or the pro, the con is if we went to RS, or rural agriculture, what would be the problems? I mean, what is, and y'all's opinion?
So RA, obviously, it's a, it's a rural district versus a residential district. So it opens up a lot of more rural activities, like agriculture uses and different things that are allowed. See, RA and RR allow a lot of different things that the residential districts do not.
I think what it'll do, Mr. Chairman, is set a precedence that not everybody that owns these 20-acre lots can come back to the Planning Commission or come back to staff and say, hey, look, we saw what happened here. Now I want to turn my, I want to add another dwelling on my house and, and go around the process and, you know, I want RA now, and I want to build another house and dwelling. I mean, it's this, it's a way for them to subdivide this property without, you know, right now it can't be subdivided, but what was you talking about the change in the what, change in the?
So, you know, each, each, uh, planning district has local provisions that are adopted when they enact zoning. So we recognize the unintended consequence of this 60% rule for accessory dwellings was creating throughout the zoning ordinance. So in the base zoning ordinance that applies to all districts, we removed that 60% rule. But there are four or five planning districts that still have that language in their local provisions. So, you know, and, and as y'all heard, when we changed some of the other local provisions in other districts, that becomes a very community-driven thing. So we can't, we couldn't just go change all those without having a lot of community input from, from each one of those communities about what they wanted to do with that. So.
Okay, thank you.
I still kind of confused, not confused, but just, there's 21 acres, and the gentleman wants to put another house on it without any limitations on the size of the house. And I understand what Commissioner Ball was saying, but if these other ones wanted to come back later, and if it's sizable and y'all agree with it, and it looks like it's going to fit for the, back to RA, why not change it back? I mean, I don't know. I don't understand if somebody wants to make it RA and they want to build another house. I just can't, I can't grasp what y'all are saying with the, trying not to allow that to happen. I really can't.
I think that it's not necessarily trying not to allow that to happen. I think it's using the wrong route to get there.
That's, it's using the wrong route.
Yes.
What would be the right route?
The right route would be to amend the local provisions of that planning district to remove the 60% rule.
Okay.
And then you could have your two dwellings on the 120-acre piece of parcel.
So we have to go through another process, a longer process to just to put the house?
So basically what Jay's saying is if you start doing this, you're stepping on the toes of the people who put this zoning in place to start with by workaround from the county. And, I mean, you know what I'm saying? Am I saying that right?
You're right. It's, it's misusing, you know, the tools of zoning ordinance for what, because like we talked about the other time, the zoning district is about use. The accessory structure size limitation is not a use thing. This is, you know, and really, we do need to evaluate this in all these local provisions because it's created a lot of unintended issues whenever, it's been adopted for a long time now, but we need to revisit that in every one of these.
And I think what you guys are trying to do is look at these local provisions and clean up some of that stuff, just like you have done in a couple of them that we've already amended. And, um, it, I don't know. I think I've said enough.
So have you guys still opened the public hearing on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any more questions for Ms. Salina?
Well, actually, I thought this was just the staff.
Yeah, we have another public hearing.
I'm fixing to open up the public.
Okay.
All right. Public hearing is officially open.
So we do have three people signed up, one in support, which is the applicants, and two in opposition, but the applicant is here, Nicole and Michael Ewing.
Are you the applicant, Ms. Ewing?
I'm an owner.
You're the owner. All right, thank you. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you for being here today and listening to us. So when we purchased this property, you know, this was a learning experience for us. Our real estate agent said, yes, you can divide the property. So in March, when we started to try to do that, we wanted to split it so that we could have three lots, like a 10-acre lot, 5-5. Well, then we weren't able to do that. So Planning and zoning gave us our next best thing and said, you know, yeah, you can't divide the property, but your next thing to do would be to go through RA. Well, let me back up. We can already have two houses on the property. With zoning, we can already have two homes on the property. Which one would be ours? The other ones would be our son. But then we found out, because it's RSFE, that that second dwelling could only be 60% of that first home, which would make it 1,800 square feet, which our deed restriction says our house can only be 1,800 square feet. So, I mean, this has been a busy, busy process. It's March. And so the next thing, the information that we got from Planning and zoning, they said, you know, you have that 60% rule, and so we thought we were at a road stop. And then they said the only thing that you could do would be just to rezone your property to RA. So that would, our next thing is like RA, because our son's house can be 3,000 square feet. That would put us at 1,800, but we've got an older mother-in-law, we've got his brother who is disabled. We need a much bigger home for our family altogether. So this is what it's all about. It's not about anything else but making that second home fit for what we need for our family. That's it. There's no hidden agenda. There's nothing else, you know, above that. So.
Our deed even states on it that, you know, we're allowed to put two dwellings on the house.
Yeah.
And, you know, like, like she said, all we're looking to do is just not have a size limitations on the two houses. You know, we found out kind of late in the game, you know, when we went to try to subdivide it, like you had spoke, found out that, well, this is the infamous Stuckey Road subdivision, and it's already been subdivided, so that's what's thrown the monkey wrench in everything.
Well, you could subdivide it, though, but you just couldn't do it through a family subdivision.
I'm sorry, what?
Right, it's already been subdivided the one time.
Correct.
You would have to go through a regular subdivision process, which would require the paving of the road.
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that it's just a different type of subdivision.
Yeah, but that would also cost lord knows how much money. We're not willing to do that.
I understand that.
This is our next best thing. We're, we live in Atlanta. We drove here for this. And this is our family forever home. You know, we're just asking...
You got 10 more seconds. Go ahead.
We're just asking for you to approve this for consideration for our family so that we can, yes, we could have an 1,800 square foot, but again, that second home that we need is for our family in that 1,800 square foot. It's just, this is just all it's about for us. We're not going to put, I mean, yeah, we could put horses on it, can't have chickens, no trailers, but I mean, that's not our goal here. Our goal here is just to do what we need to do for our family, and eliminate that 60% rule so that we can have a bigger home. Yeah, but we, we appreciate all the help from Baldwin County. I have to tell you, we're from Atlanta. We don't get this courtesy. We don't get, like, everybody from Planning and zoning to building has been nothing short of amazing, honestly. It's just been, other than this issue, which, you know, it's been helpful and amazing. So we just hope you will consider eliminating maybe this RA, just for that purpose of building our second home larger.
Sure.
So we appreciate it.
Oh, we had two others signed up. First is Jeff Winters.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Jeff Winters, and I live directly to the east of the proposed property. We have lived out there now 23 years, and we're against this, my wife and I are against this planned rezoning request due to the fact that when we purchased our property out there, we purchased with the intention and the guidance provided by the County Commission of how the land use was going to be done. What happens with the fact that you allow this to rezone, then the other people will be requesting to rezone. And then we have a mixture of, of use in that area. You know, we, my wife is a lifelong Alberta resident. I was military. I met her here, took her away for five years. We came back, did my last time, you know, my last nine years in the service from Alberta. We wanted to retire here. That's why we bought out there. We have almost a little over nine acres, two lots, and that's our home. The fact that this rezoning request is against the planned use of our home, our home area. And also, what else there, can of worms get opened up by this rezoning? You know, there's a large commercial building already being, already built on the lot. All I would, you know, just was hoping that you would consider the fact that this is not conducive to the desire of the person who subdivided the land to begin with. So, thank you.
And finally, we have Randy Stricker.
Good morning.
My name's Randy Stricker. I live on Stuckey Road. My western property line is adjacent to the eastern property line of the petitioners. I heard, what is the makeup of the neighborhood? Well, I've lived there for going on 20 years, and the makeup is pretty well established. Nobody has to come tell me what it's going to be. We have all lived under a subdivisions multiple that originally started by Jay Stradley. This goes back over 30 years. The subdivision that the Ewing's owned the one piece of property in was always owned the same as my subdivision and Mr. Winters' subdivision. These subdivisions stretch out for over a mile and a quarter. If we allow one lot in a particular subdivision to rezone, what can of worms do we open when somebody in my established subdivision, which still has open lots owned by somebody but nothing on them, to say, you know what, I own 11 acres, and I surely would like to subdivide it. Let me see how I can screw with my neighbor's property values? Now, while the Ewing's may have completely altruistic intent, what happens when they sell it? Because if it goes RA, they are allowed, the new owners, to do certain things with the property that are not allowed in our current zoning, which I'm going to go worst-case scenario. You want to have a pig farm? Feel free. Now, how am I going to feel when I go to sell my property and there is the waft of a pigsty coming over my back fence? I can't do anything about it because the commission said, we're going to rezone. Then we open up the next can of worms, which is, if you allow them to rezone their property, when other people, not even on my street, not even in my area, come to you and say, I'd like to rezone my piece of property in the subdivision, you say, well, you can't do that. And they go, whoa, 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 whoa. We have set a precedent. Let me show you what you did. I look at it this way. The Ewing's unfortunately did not do their due diligence. I have purchased many pieces of property, both residential, commercial. I always made sure that they were zoned for what my use was. I've even paid for engineering studies before closing on a piece of property to make sure that I could do what I needed to do. I never tried to infringe on the current property owners, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I thought we had a side up, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I close the public hearing on this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny case Z25/12.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second to deny. Any further discussion? I'd just like to say one thing. And I get, I understand what y'all are saying. I really do. But it's so hard for me. Is there anything that we can do, Jade, to help these individuals to get what they want to do? Because if, if they're limited to a size of another house and they own 21 acres, I just, I just feel like that's just, that's harsh. That's hard.
Yes, and like I said, we recognize the, the issues this 60% rule creates. That's why we took it out of the rest of the zoning ordinance. But if, if the commission would like, we could certainly engage the, the community out there and see if, you know, it would be acceptable to, to just eliminate that 60% accessory dwelling rule, which I, you know, I personally think would be a good idea. I think that, that puts some unneeded restrictions on, especially some of these large lot properties like this, is that, you know, it's not uncommon to have, you know, two larger homes, a primary and a secondary. I think the intention of why it was written was well done, but I think there were just some unintended, you know, kind of consequences of what it created.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I got a motion and a second to deny. No more discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. So 31, it passes. Next case?
This is case Z2516, SR Development LLC property. The request is to rezone from RA to B2. Here's the location of the property within the county. The property is located east of County Road 87 and south of County Road 32 in Planning District 22. It's approximately 2.55 acres. The current use is vacant, and they would like to rezone for future development. Here's the locator map and the site map. The property is surrounded by RSF1, B2 to the west, and unzoned to the north with either a residential vacant or commercial land use. In terms of the analysis, there have been minimal changes in local conditions, but all of the immediate adjacent properties have been rezoned since zoning was adopted. It was rezoned to either RSF1 or B2. As the proposed amendment appears to be a logical expansion and aligns with the existing development patterns in the area. And there's also the B2 property to the west, which is currently under development for commercial use. Also, the property is located near a rural crossroad center node, and this aims to serve the needs of the community with a mix of retail and service uses. So staff's recommendation of this request is approval, and the Planning Commission also voted to recommend approval of the request.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
I don't have any.
All right. Open up the public hearing. Jay?
I'm sure we have one person signed up in support. Agent is Deanna Height.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just signed up as a representative of the property owner in case you all had any questions. The staff generally does a tremendous job filling you in, so I wanted to make sure I was available to you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let me back. Did anybody that, that did not sign up that would like to speak on this case? Forgot to do that earlier. Hearing none. Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve case number Z25-16, SR Development LLC property rezoning.
I'll second it.
What was your motion, Commissioner?
To approve.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you. All right, got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
The next case is Z2523, CM Counseling LLC. The next case is Z2523, CM Counseling LLC property. The request is to rezone from RSFE to B1. Here's the location of the property within the county. It's located north of County Road 64 and east of State Highway 181 in Daphne. It's located in Planning District 15. It's approximately one acre and the current use is residential. The applicant is requesting a rezone for commercial use. Here's the subject property as well as the adjacent property images. Here's a locator map and the site map. The property is surrounded by RSFE zoning with either a commercial or residential land use. In terms of the analysis, there have been many changes in local conditions. Many of the residentially zoned parcels along County Road 64 have been rezoned for commercial use. So this appears to be a logical expansion and aligns with the existing development pattern in the area. Also, the property is located within an urban mixed-use area, and that supports the rezoned request to B1. So staff's recommendation of the request is approval.
Commissioners, any questions? No? All right. Open up the public hearing.
We had one person signed up, Chris Mitchum, who's the property owner.
All right. You want to come speak? You're more than welcome to.
Okay.
It's up to you. You don't have to if you don't want to.
You don't have to.
All right. All right. Is anybody else out there in the audience that did not sign up for this that would like to speak? All right. Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion. We approve case Z25/23, CM Counseling LLC property rezoning.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. You're working today, you and Selena.
Yeah, yeah, we got them all.
All right, this is case Z2524, Hilltop QOZ Fund LLC property. The request is to rezone from RSFE to RSF1. Here's the location of the property within the county. The property is located north of Keller Road and west of State Highway 59 in the Foley area. It's located in Planning District 35. It's approximately 10 acres and the current use is residential. And the applicant would like to rezone to subdivide for residential use. Here's the subject property as well as adjacent property images. The locator and the site maps. The zoning adjacent to this property includes RSF1, RA, as well as RSFE with residential, commercial, or vacant land uses. In terms of the analysis, the majority of the surrounding properties are currently zoned for residential use. So the proposed amendment appears to be a logical expansion and aligns with the existing development pattern. Staff's recommendation of the request from RSFE to RSF1 is approval.
Commissioners, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
All right. Close, open up the public hearing.
We have two people signed up, one in support, one in opposition. The property owner is here, Jackie Mule.
Okay. Jackie?
Where's your frank questions?
Okay, if you have, all right, thank you.
And the next is Richard Davis.
Mr. Richard?
Good morning.
Yeah.
I represent the Hinsons who own the property to the west. And I, just a handful of comments. When I look at zoning applications to rezone, just like the staff and y'all, I look at the surrounding property. And the property to the north is, as noted in the staff report, zoned RSF1. So that would militate toward granting this rezoning. But it is a, it is a high-density subdivision that is well separated from the living area of the subject property. When you go out and look at it, you would never see it. And then the property to the south is used for commercial, but it's across from Keller Road. So while you look at the surrounding properties, you look at it on paper, it's a tad misleading because when you actually drive out there, you look to the east and you look to the west of this 10-acre tract, it's clearly low-density residential property. Now, the staff report refers to a pending subdivision, three-lot subdivision, subdivision application. The last I checked in the portal, that is, is not available yet. And frankly, if I had the subdivision application for the Hinsons to see, they might look at it and say, you know, we don't object to this 10 acres being used for these three lots. But as a matter of principle, we do object for, to these, this 10 acres going from 80,000 square foot lots to 30,000 square foot lots. So for that purpose, for that reason, I must formally object to this particular rezoning. We don't have anything against these nice folks. They've been cordial neighbors, but we don't think that 30,000 square foot lots are appropriate for this 10 acres.
Okay? Thank you.
That's all we had signed up.
All we have signed up. Anybody in the audience that did not sign up that wants to speak on this case? All right. All right, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Jackie, property owner. What we proposed was three parcels, two three-acre parcels and one four-acre parcel. Currently, the four-acre parcel has two mobile homes on it. We wanted to take the other six acres, which is divided in half, and have two extra lots there. The only way we can accomplish that, given the, the road frontage, is by rezoning it because the county's requirements is 125 feet per lot, road frontage, where we only have 330 feet. So we are short just a few feet to be able to have those three lots. So what we're asking for is one four-acre parcel and two three-acre parcels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve case number Z25-24, Hilltop.
Second.
All right, got a, got a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next case?
All right, the next case is the Cotton Property, and they are requesting to rezone from RSF1 to RA. The subject property is located in Planning District 20. It's north of County Road 26 and east of County Road 49. It's currently zoned RSF1, and the applicant is asking for RA, rural agricultural. It consists of five acres and is currently vacant. The rezoning is requested for the applicant to build a personal storage building. We have received no emails or letters from the public for or against. We did recently receive a letter from the town of Magnolia Springs saying they were in support of this rezoning. You can see the subject property is highlighted. To the north and west is zoned RSF1. To the east and south is zoned RA, rural agricultural. The flow for this area is moderate development potential and also rural agricultural and LID potential. Staff has recommended approval of this request from RSF1 to RA.
Okay. Don't hear any questions?
Nope.
Open up the public hearing.
We had no one sign up for this one.
All right. Anybody in the audience that did not sign up that would like to speak on this case? Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make, go ahead, Skip. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve case number Z25-26, the Cotton property rezoning. Second.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. All right, next case? Yeah, Jade needs to let y'all off tomorrow.
This is case Z2527, Cypress Break LLC property. The request is to rezone from RA to RR. Here's the location of the property within the county. It is located south and west of Roscoe Road in the Foley area in Planning District 30. It's approximately 30 acres and the current use is timberland. They would like to rezone for the lot to be utilized for office warehouse use. Staff has not received any letters or emails supporting or opposing the rezoning request. Here's the subject property and adjacent property images. Here's a locator map and a site map. The adjacent zonings include RA, as well as the city of Gulf Shores to the west, and adjacent land uses include agricultural, timberland, and commercial. In terms of the staff analysis, the majority of the surrounding properties are currently zoned for rural use. And then we also see similar storage facilities within a mile of the subject property. Therefore, the proposed amendment appears to be a logical expansion and aligns with the existing development patterns in the area. Staff's recommendation of the request from RA to RR is approval.
Hearing no questions from the Commissioners? Open up the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we had one, the engineer for the project, Tom Granger, signed up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give a hand to you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody in the audience that did not sign up for this case that wants to speak? Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve case number Z25-27, Cypress Break LLC property rezoning. Second.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next case?
We got you a snare drum over there, get ready. Start doing a drum roll. We're fixing to wind these things up.
All right. This is the last rezoning case.
You got the last one.
Yes.
You got the last one. My comment's gonna be short.
All right.
We got the, and the last applicant just sitting out there waiting.
How can you get the last on the list?
Can you believe online is all faded?
No. All right, the last rezoning request is the Dias property. They're requesting to rezone from RA to RSF2. The subject property is located in Planning District 15, south of Larry Street and west of Rigsby Road. The property consists of 39 acres, and they are requesting RSF2 for future residential development. You can see to the north, the subject property is in Planning District 7, which is unzoned. And to the west and south is RSF2, and to the east, there is some RA. The future land use map does designate this area as moderate development potential and mid-density development, which is consistent with the requested RSF2. And staff has recommended approval of this request.
All right, any questions for staff? Open up the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we only had one person signed up, Kathy Barnett, who's the agent for the applicant.
Here to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you. Anybody that, in the audience that did not sign up for this case that wants to speak? All right?
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve case Z25/28, the Dias property rezoning.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right. Thank you, Selena.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Y'all did an excellent job. Other staff recommendations? Public comments? Anybody out in the public that wants to speak?
Better not.
Press questions? I don't see nobody in the press. Commissioner comments? You like to go first, Commissioner Ball? Or you want?
I mean, hang on just a second. Is there anybody signed up from the public to speak?
Yeah, I've already asked the public comment. Nobody's here.
Go ahead. Commissioner Gruber, you got any comments?
All right, I'll start. Again, thank our staff for all the work that they do to get us, this agenda taken care of so that we can vote on it. And thank you for the service that our retirees have given the county. And, you know, today was the first day that, you know, the County Commission actually looked at the rezoning stuff as thorough as it did. You know, the Planning Commission used to do this and then all, you know, but now it's our responsibility and, you know, I think, overall, I think we did a good job on it today. You know, you know, we have to look at a lot of different factors. Go into development and also the use of land as is designated, you know, so. But anyway, I want to thank the staff and my fellow Commissioners for today's meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Underwood?
Thanks to staff. It's amazing that we have this many cases on here and it's not midnight. Art left out of here, I think, but he was on the Planning Commission back when I was, when we did have meetings that lasted until midnight, which I hope that never happens again. I hope you guys can figure out a way not to make that happen. But I just want to congratulate the County Commission, along with Solid Waste, for being awarded the Achievement Award from NACO, which is the National Association of Counties. That is something that I don't think has hit the press yet, but that is a huge endeavor. I believe there's approximately 3,000 counties in this United States of America. And for us to get selected for an Achievement Award alongside with Solid Waste is amazing. And if you've not been to our recycling facility, which is what the award is being handed out for, I waited till school was out and I took three of my great nieces down there and ended up having two more come along. So I had five young girls with me, and they are, still were asking me questions about the recycling facility. There are over 7,000 square feet of educational space down there. And soon, I'm very excited about the different communities who are coming onboard with having the rollout cart for your recycling. I think we got a notification maybe yesterday or the day before, whatever, that the CHARM, which may butcher this, which is the hard-to-recycle materials, I don't know what the C is, it's citizens, hard-to-recycle material, the A don't match in there, maybe that acronym. But anyways, so right next door, where there's hardly any parking, it's called a CHARM. We're at the Fairhope Courthouse. For those of you who actually watch this, I know sometimes it plays on the nursing home places, but I saw that because my mom was in the nursing home. And I know I'm getting off subject, but she had dementia. And we would be in the nursing home and I'd say, hey, Mom, I'm on TV. She goes, okay, like it was no big deal. But anyhow, the CHARM is gonna be great for things that you can't put in your regular garbage can, that you shouldn't put in the landfill, and things that you can come up here and bring. So I just, I shout out to, it's a partnership between the County Commission and Solid Waste. I know we've created an authority, and they're separated from us and somewhat, but will always be integrated together in the fact that the County Commission is the one that sets the board and different things like that. So I'm sure I could talk about a lot of other things, but I just really think that it is epic that they've been awarded this award and get to get the recognition when we go to NACO in July. So thank y'all.
Yeah, like Commissioner Gruber said, thanks to the staff for putting together this Like Commissioner Gruber said, thanks to the staff for putting together this agenda. 12 public hearings, you know, something crazy to look forward to today, but we're getting our practice in, so I think it went well. Jay, thanks to you and your staff for putting all that together for us, and to the retirees, please enjoy your time that you got retired and try not to go back to work and try to get another retirement, but that's what everybody's doing nowadays. So when you're young enough and can retire, you can go back to work. So with that being said, that's all I've got. Just congratulations to those guys.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the staff. Thank you, Jay, for helping me with this, with the cases. Just don't forget about the Glass family. I know it's hard times right now, so just keep them in your prayers and thoughts. Thank you, Commissioners, and we're done.
Thank you.